All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this April 6th. Meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fireson?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Mayor McKinney? Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. On three, two, one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioner McDowell will lead us in prayer this evening.
Yes, let's pray. Father, we're living in a post resurrection world. The news that shook the earth that he has risen. And at that moment, joy replaced despair, hope pushed past fear, and life conquered death. Not just that day, but now for eternity. And as we celebrated the resurrection of Christ and what it meant for us and what it means for us every day, a sacrifice that brings forgiveness, renewal, and peace. And Father, we want to pray for that forgiveness in our community, renewal in our community, and peace in our community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Item number four, are there any agenda changes by any of the commissioners? If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Don't move. Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number five, citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments this evening? Was anything submitted online today?
Ms. Lear, I think, is holding her hand up.
Yes, I do, and I'm trying to mute myself. Thank you, Mayor McKinney and Councilman. I have a couple of questions and concerns. I'd like to know, I've been a citizen of Zion for over 50 years. And as I drove around today, the city is filthy. This city is filthy. I know Mayor McKinney, several times you've mentioned in the council meetings that the citizens should be responsible for picking up, which I truly believe in also. Is there any way we can plan a cleanup week, a cleanup? We need a cleanup week. We need a cleanup week. Full effort with the city and the citizens to try to clean up our city. My next question is the litter around rental properties here. We have a lot of rental properties in Zion, as I understand, we're over 50%, 40% capacity in our rentals. Most properties have one to two dumpsters that are dumping once or twice a week. Debris flying everywhere. That also adds to the litter in the city. So that's another question I have. I talked to the city several months ago about, I live right behind Sherrill's on 18th and Lewis. There's an empty lot. Now, this has been used for dumping ground. One of my neighbors put furniture over there. Now there's a tire, there's a bag of garbage, and it's just stacking up. Right across from Sherrill's on the corner of 18th and Lewis. I want to know if there's anything that can be done about that. And my last question is, I understand we have an ordinance in the city that allows four dogs per apartment. What can we do to change that where we can make it two dogs and no vicious animals? How can we do that? And what can be done by the citizens to help change this? And thank you.
Are there any other citizens, any other citizen comments? We will address those comments during our departmental commentary. I think we've answered some of those questions before, but as we get through the council meeting to the latter stages, we will answer those questions the best we can or reach out to you, Ms. Lear, after the council meeting.
Mayor, if I could just interject real quick, if anyone would like to public comment, what we do on the virtual meetings here is to raise your hand. So under your reactions, there's an option to raise hand. I just want to make sure everyone, if anyone did want to have a comment, that's how we would call on you. I am currently seeing none. All right.
And pardon me, was the disclaimer supposed to be read at the beginning of the meeting?
Yeah, not always necessary because that is online and citizens' comments also. Everyone pretty much knows that they're limited to three minutes. And even while we get questions during citizen comments, we're not obligated to answer those questions at the moment. But if there's a circumstance that merits it, response will be given. And we have a general policy during our citizens' comments not to comment on employment litigation or other related issues. So with no reactions or more questions for citizens' comments, we will move to item six, which is consent agenda.
Full of minutes of a regular meeting held on March 16th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on March 16th, 2021 at 7:29 PM.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fireson? Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Bills vouchers 137015 through 137223 drawn on Huntington National Bank.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll move to approve the bills.
Your second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number seven, consider passing resolution as follows. Item 7A to make Zion, Illinois a monarch city, USA community, per Mayor McKinney. Whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species who's multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly, has captured the imagination of millions of Americans, young and old. And whereas the monarch butterfly is the Illinois state insect and a critical decline in population monarch, population continues. And whereas on March 20th, 2018, the city of Zion passed a resolution making the zinnia Zion's official flower, providing nectar gardens throughout our city for the monarch butterflies. Whereas the monarch is extremely beneficial, pollinating many cultivated flowers, including the zinnias, the city flower, and crops, and serves as an indicator species for the ecological health of large geographic areas. And whereas the city of Zion is made up of approximately one-third Latino residents, many from Mexico, where the monarch butterfly over winters. And whereas the Illinois Doonesland Garden Club endorses the project and encourages our residents to reestablish native milkweed and zinnias by providing prizes for the best yard displays. And whereas the Zion Park District converted the entire Over Park into a monarch butterfly habitat and works to integrate monarch butterfly conservation into Zion's land use planning efforts and to create additional monarch butterfly sanctuary sites. And whereas Zion Park District's Hosa Park is a protected home of several native milkweed species and hundreds of species of other native plants that allow monarchs to thrive. And whereas Kathleen Garnis, the Hosa Park Environmental Overseer, is committed to assisting the K-12 school system and local educators in promoting a better understanding of land use conservation than the gem we have in Hosa Park. And whereas cities, towns, and countries have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly in the city of Zion has declared an interest in becoming Illinois Third Monarch City to be designated by Monarch City USA, a nonprofit organization dedicated to helping the monarch butterfly recover city by city. And whereas a group of Zion volunteers are committed to hosting a yearly monarch butterfly festival. And whereas every city of Zion can make a difference for the monarch by planting native milkweed and nectar plant, preferably zinnia Zion's official flower, to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, play, and worship. And whereas on behalf of the people of Zion who have already created healthy habitats for these magnificent butterflies, it's the hope that other cities across our great nation will also help to ensure that monarch butterfly will once again flourish across the continent. Now, therefore, be resolved that I, Billy McKinney, Mayor of the City of Zion, do hereby proclaim the city of Zion a monarch city, USA community. Cheryl, do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Just a brief point of discussion, too. I also know that Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church has an area where they raised the monarch butterfly. I had the opportunity to go over there, speak at a Bible school session, introduce myself to the residents, and also tour that habitat, and it was absolutely fantastic. So Mount Zion, over in my neck of the woods, over on Lebanon and 30th Street, also has a great exhibit for the monarch butterflies. Item number eight, consider passing, oh, excuse me. Where was I? What, I got ahead of myself, Cheryl?
I have, we have to call the roll.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Item eight, authorizing renewable agreement for electrical aggregation consulting services, per Mayor McKinney. The background on this is following the passage of a voter referendum in April 2013. The city has managed a municipal aggregation program largely driven by savings for residents. The program has led to cumulative savings directly for participating residents of over $650,000. The city's current municipal aggregation program is due for renewal at its July term end. A renewal program requires several months to implement, thus a contract would need to be accepted early April. The comment rate is reset June 1st. New rate is expected to be 6.7 cents for four months, for four summer months, and 7.2 for eight non-summer months. The base rate varies by positive, negative one half cent, meaning the comment rate would range from 6.2 cents to 7.7 cents over the next year for an average of seven cents. The proposal for the city has two options for renewal. Option A is the fixed rate, given the lowest bid indications, projected average household savings of $70 per year, potentially 400,000 plus cumulative savings to our residents. That is option A. Option B, ad rate program, no savings for residents, but no risk of paying above com ads rates. The civic contribution to the city currently is about $129,000 and some change. And Zion retains its status as an EPA Green Power Partner Community, currently ranked number 99 by the EPA in terms of green power consumption versus total power consumed. Tonight, we have to determine the length of the contract. We have with us tonight Sharon Durling to answer any questions that we have about this aggregation. And the suggested term was two years at a fixed rate, which would projected savings for our residents would be about $70 per year.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I think that before we move on, I think you've moved on to item B. Before we can do that, we have to authorize the renewal of the agreement for consulting services first.
That's correct.
Then we can move on to the aggregation program, which you just summarized.
Okay, is there a motion for the renewal of the agreement for the electrical aggregation consulting services?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fireson? Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item 8B, thank you, Commissioner, for that correction. Getting ahead of myself this evening, must be the weather. Authorizing renewal of aggregation program for electrical load, per Mayor McKinney. And I've read the options that we have, the fixed rate and the comment rate, and the lowest bid indicators, projected average household savings of $7 per year. So is there a motion?
Do we want to hear from Sharon Durling first on what the recommendations are?
Absolutely.
Cheryl Spooner sent us fresh information on the current rate options. So we should probably review that before we move on.
All right. Sharon Durling?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be happy to just kind of review. So as you nicely outlined, fixed rate bid, which would offer savings to the residents. And last year, we didn't have any, you know, number that would virtually guarantee savings. Again, I don't want to say guarantee, it's not guaranteed, but we were looking at the two-year rate from DynaG Energie. They're the lowest bidder on the board here for a fixed rate. And for the two-year term at 6.179, you know, it's pretty significantly below the average rate that's expected per the ICC of seven cents over the next 12 months. And in the second year period, the comment rate might drop a little bit lower, but it looks like there's a good margin for saving, so that looks attractive. And, you know, there's the option where everyone pays the comment rate, but there would be no available savings to residents, but monies for the city. But the DynaG Energie offer looked pretty good. They're based in Illinois, and they're a pretty good company that we've done a lot of business with. DynaG is in Collinsville, very far south downstate.
Sharon, some questions that might come up out of this is, could you explain a little bit more to our citizens that might be watching our council meeting following this? If they have to opt into this program, or what are their options?
Yeah, good, thank you. In 2009, Governor Quinn signed into law, and as you said earlier, the voters in Zion, by majority vote, enabled the council to go out to bid, you know, for the idea to find some benefit for the residents. So should the city go forward to renew the program, every rate payer in the city and very resident and small business, very small businesses, would receive a notice from the city letterhead, and it would give them the opportunity to opt out if they do not want to participate. Governor Quinn signed into law this automatic opt-in so that the majority of folks would probably do nothing and participate with the city council sort of oversight to, you know, be beneficial to the residents. So there are never any side fees, trick fees, fees to leave. And, you know, we command pretty good service being it, service for the city. So every resident has an opportunity to opt out. They can participate. And if they decide a few months later they want to leave for some reason, they can always leave, never an early termination fee.
You said something I think that's crucial, too, is that this program is for small businesses, too?
Yes. By law, only businesses that consume 15,000 kilowatt hour per year or less. So that wouldn't include a restaurant, or, you know, maybe a barber shop, or a law office or CPA that doesn't use a lot of power, maybe open nine to five. So it wouldn't cover a grocery store, for example.
And any information that they receive is directed by your office as part of this, the opt-out? Is it pretty clear to them when they receive this information? Because I think some citizens are confused by it.
Yes, Mayor, that's something that we've worked hard, and I think the city seemed, it seemed to go more smoothly last year. Maybe Clerk Spooner can attest to that or not. But we worked a bit harder at putting more information on the website and doing a little bit of sort of Facebook, social media. But the letter, which you and Clerk Spooner can review and edit to your liking, because it's officially from the city, we write as clear as we can, and there are different ways. They can call, they can email, they can call us as well. So we try to make it very clear, and we're happy to take a lot of calls from residents. I do take calls.
Okay, I guess a couple of other questions. What's com ad's role in this program as one? And are there any downsides to it?
Good question. Com ad by law hasn't supplied any electricity for, I think, since 2007. So it's actually completely neutral. It's like financially neutral to them. In fact, they support the concept of municipal aggregation. The monopoly that was com ad was broken up, and actually, our rates have gone down from about nine cents and changed to what you're seeing on the board here, six and seven cents. So by law, they do all billing, so residents would continue to get the same com ad bill. They could do their budget billing. If they're eligible for assistance, like HEEP and PIP, I think it's called, they'll still receive their assistance. So com ad actually supports it and has a whole division devoted to making sure this goes smoothly. Downside? Downside, I would say none for the first year. In year two, since the one-year rate is six and a half, that doesn't really guarantee savings. Year two at 6.179 is more attractive. Year two, it would be if the bottom would fall out. When I say bottom fallout, maybe pandemic round two or an economic collapse in the com ad rate were to drop. Well, the com ad rate can't come down significantly, but it could drop a little bit if it came down to that low rate, which I think is nine and two impossible, but we should never say never. Any resident could leave at any time, and we would even help communicate to residents. I think that's very unlikely, but we would assist all residents if, for some reason, the com ad rate really collapsed.
Okay, Sharon, I think you've covered this, but I just want to be clear. If residents participate, will they get two bills?
They will not. In fact, if some people don't even see the opt-out notice, maybe the dog ate it or such, they would still get the same com ad bill. The only difference would, if they notice on the backside of the bill, the line would say DynaG Energie, whereas today it's Elago is the city's current supplier. And if it's com ad, it doesn't say anything. There's just a number there. So it would look the same to residents, one bill.
The last question I have, sorry, Commissioners, I don't mean monopolize, but if the power goes out, who do our residents call?
Yes, always com ad, because by law, they're what we call polar, provider of last resort. So the tree might hit a line, but com ad is legally bound to get out there and provide power. So you call com ad.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Mayor, I have one question. So the 36-month rate is 6.086, which is significantly better than the two-year rate. So what's the pros and cons of going for two years as opposed to three years?
That's a good, really good question. It's, actually, this is in cents, so it's about eight one-hundredths of a penny per kilowatt hour, which I didn't calculate. It might be, I don't know, 50 cents difference or something a month, or I'm not sure, I should calculate that number. But as you'll see, Commissioner McDowell, the bids decline year to year, which tells us that those suppliers believe power prices are going to decline. As you'll notice, some of the other suppliers' pricing drops a little bit from year to year. So I think it's prudent, that's a great number, but it's a little more prudent to keep a shorter leash in cases, I said, not much is going to happen in a year or maybe 24 months, but in three years, if there's some sort of crash and electricity prices kind of bottom out, well, you've kept a short leash on it, and you can come back in two years rather than three. But that's an option for you to consider.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions from our Commissioners? Is there, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve a 24-month contract with DynaG Energie for aggregation program.
Second.
Any other questions before we call the roll? Sharon, thank you so much for being with us tonight and answering those questions. I know there are going to be some, and appreciate you coming up and going over the program with us about 10 days ago. So thank you so much for your time. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number 8C, consider approval of memorandum of understanding between Midwest Regional Medical Center and the Zion Fire Rescue Department for the emergency transport of MRMC patients, per Chief Street.
Thanks, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a very similar MOU in agreement that we've had with the hospital for quite a few years. Did finally expire, and all of the names have changed related to it. So this just allows us to do some transporting from the guest quarters, businesses, or hotels over to their building at a flat charge per month. So no change in wording, just change in dates and the names involved.
All right, is there, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there questions or comments for Chief Street? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number 8D, approving and authorizing the publication of the official zoning map of the city of Zion, per Director Iyantin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Due to the annexation of the landfill, we had to redraw the boundaries for the city zoning map, and we were required to publish it and notify and adopt a new zoning map. So staff is recommending that we approve and adopt the new zoning map.
Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion?
I just have one. Director Iyantin, were there any new updates to the map this year?
Just the boundaries for the annexation.
Any additional questions? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number 8E, approving and authorizing a certain MOU between the City of Zion and Ram Development Partners LLC, per Administrator Nable.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We have, as you know, kind of sat on the ballfield property since we took control of it for a little bit. Primarily, the reason for that was we were waiting to get that entire area as part of a TIF district, as well as for our enterprise zone designation to kick in. Now that we have both of those, we wanted to move forward with some active marketing of the property. But rather than just put it with a Realtor and let it sit there as a listing, we were approached by retail strategies who have a development branch of their business, developer branch of the business, which is this Ram Development, or Ram Partners, Ram Development Partners. That basically, what this MOU does is it gives them a 12-month exclusivity period that they can go out and try and make the connections, act as the developer, to try and attract businesses into town, basically close the deal. So you're not just listing the property, but they use their relationships with retailers, commercial, and residential developers to try and actually bring a project to that site. There's no cost to us on this. Their incentive is they get their percentage of the deal from the client. When it closes, that's how they get paid, so their incentive is to make this work. And the downside, for lack of a better term, is that we are kind of locking it up for a 12-month period. However, they would absolutely work with us if we were approached by something, someone interested in that property. We would work with them on that, but we thought this was a better approach than just listing it on the market and hoping that somebody came along to purchase it. So based on that, I would recommend the approval of the memorandum of understanding with Ram Development Partners as presented.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Any questions or comments? Administrator Enable, just so that we can refresh people's memory about our relationship with retail strategies, I think would be excellent. We've been working with them very closely in bringing businesses to town. And we've worked with them to get Popeyes in when that looked like it was dead. So could you talk a little bit about our relationship with them and how that's been?
Retail Strategies provides a lot of, first of all, they provide a lot of statistical and demographic information. They do market trend analysis. They see where we're underserved as far as food, clothing, various market trends. They look at, based on credit card purchases, things of that nature, what money is going out of town because we might not have those services in place. At that point, what they do is they have teams that reach out to retailers to try and make those connections. They put together marketing materials for us, map the corridors, they market specific city-owned sites, as well as other privately-owned sites that we work with the owners on. And basically, they just supplement what we're trying to do, but don't always have the time and resources or all of the relationships that they do to be able to do. They also attend pre-COVID, but they also attended a multitude, probably a half dozen of different national retail conventions that we couldn't afford to send staff to to cover those costs. They're there representing us as a community and marketing to all the booths, the different, they go around to the different booths. But they also call during the year and make sure they keep their ear to the ground on places that are looking to expand or looking for new locations. I mean, there's a, you know, there's ten thousand cities like Zion to accompany unknown. They just look at numbers and where they could put, they could put their stores anywhere. We want to make sure that they know Zion exists. So that's what retail strategy does on our behalf, is make sure we're on the map out there.
Thank you, Administrator Enable. While we're at roll call now? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner McDowell. Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Holmes. Mayor McKinney.
Item number nine, discussion authorization and approval. Nine A, request permission to accept proposal of assurance agency for the renewal of workers' compensation, liability and other insurance effective May first, 2021 through May first, 2022 per Administrator Nable.
Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners. This is time for our annual renewal of workers' comp insurance, as well as all of our general lines of insurance. The primaries being our umbrella policy and our law enforcement policy, but along with all the other lines for auto, workplace violence, et cetera. So assurance goes out to the market, gets quotes for us, and basically negotiates on our behalf, once they get those quotes back, to try and reduce rates even further based on specific circumstances of the city that they know that a carrier might not. Happy to note that the renewals came back very favorably for us this year. Workers' compensation is a decrease of about $33,000 from the prior year. We're still paying quite a bit in workers' comp. Our workers' comp premium is $767,000 a year. But that was, that's actually down from about $900,000, probably four or five years ago, due to some big claims dropping off, as well as some training and other things that we've done and got into place to try and shorten the terms of those workers' comp injuries. Overall, all the individual lines are there, but overall, we are saving about $42,000 over our prior renewal or our prior premiums based on the results of their efforts. So I would recommend, as they, as assurance does, renewal of the lines listed with total premiums in the amount of $1,094,769. The one thing this does not include, which is in process, we just got the quotes back and it'll be on the next meeting, is our cyber insurance for basically network security. It's something we added last year, but we were just a little slow in getting all the applications out. But that renewal will come back for approval on the April twentieth meeting. It's not a significant premium. We're not expecting significant changes, but we wanted to at least move forward with these.
All right, thank you, Administrator Enable. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the renewal of workers' comp liability and other insurance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner McDowell. Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Holmes. Mayor McKinney.
Item number nine B, request permission to accept proposal of assurance agency for the renewal of health, dental and life insurance effective May first, 2021 through May first, 2022 per Director Nable.
Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners. We had some more good news on our health insurance renewal, which was somewhat surprising, given the trends that health insurance have had over the past few years. Assurance, again, they've been busy for us for the past couple of months, but they went out to market again for our health insurance, life insurance and dental. Initially, our health insurance came back at a 3.89% increase over prior year. But as I said, assurance negotiates on our behalf. They go into Blue Cross and basically say, hey, you got to get this number down. This big claim happened. They had turnover of employees. This employee that had large medical claims is no longer here. You need to adjust things down. And they were actually able to negotiate a decrease in the insurance from prior years, but with fees, with administrative fees and everything like that. It basically comes out to be a flat renewal, which is fantastic. I was anticipating probably about a five to seven percent increase, which is about $150,000 on our total insurance. So a flat renewal is great news. No changes in levels of coverage. Just so you know, we're self-insured for dental claims. We use Guardian for that. So the underwriter processed that and they administered all the claims. Their renewal came back at a 1.7% decrease. And our life insurance rate, they froze for another year. One benefit for us going with Blue Cross Blue Shield on our life insurance is that we get a 1% discount on our health. So it more than covers the cost of the life insurance just by going with Blue Cross. But there was no, the rate was frozen on that as well. So I would recommend renewal of health, life and dental as presented.
Thank you, Administrator Nable. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Questions or discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner McDowell. Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Holmes. Mayor McKinney.
Item number nine C, consider proposals for water and sewer rate study per Administrator Nable.
Thank you, and unmute myself there. We discussed a while ago, looking at our water rates, and we know that we've been behind in addressing infrastructure for years, unfortunately, which isn't uncommon in municipalities. We try to be conscientious of that, the rates to residents. But unfortunately, our water infrastructure has gotten away from us a bit due to trying to keep that rate under control. What we wanted to do is go out and we went out for proposals to basically have an independent third party look at our water rates. People that are in the field, that this is their area of expertise and also that they're independent. Look at our capital needs, look at our cost of operations, and basically, and look at surrounding communities and come up with what our water rate should be based on all of those needs. So what we did is we went out for proposal on that. Alex Franchel has worked a lot on this. He's actually in the meeting if we have any questions on this. But we went up for proposal. You have the recap before you hear. There were five vendors that came back, all with varying, very significant varying degrees of price. But Fairgram is the firm that came out on top with a price of $9,000. They would return the rates to us in a two-month period. You can see they've had similar engagements with surrounding communities or relatively closed communities. We did some due diligence on checking into the Fairgram company, as well as reference checking the company because there was such a discrepancy in their price versus others. We wanted to make sure that they were responsible bidders. Came back with nothing but glowing reviews from their customers and nothing but clean praise for their company. We couldn't find anything out there, negative reviews, Yelp reviews, or whatever you want to call it. Their corporate reputation was high and in good standing. So based on that, I would recommend that we engage Fairgram at a price of $9,000 to do our water rate study.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the water rate study for Fairgram as our contractor for that.
Questions or discussion?
That's a really big jump from theirs to like even the next bidder, so that's great.
Yeah, basically, they, you know, when we kind of looked at that, it was a good kind of, they got it. They're like, this is what you're looking for. No bells, whistles. This is what we'll come in and do. And they specialize in this. The other communities we talked to actually said the same thing. They got low prices and they were concerned as well. But they couldn't be happier with them. So that kind of a swag and a red flags that we had.
Great. Did we call the roll already? If not, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner McDowell. Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Holmes. Mayor McKinney.
Item number nine D is consider approving budgets for street and bridge fund. One, two hotel motel tax fund for May first, 2021 through April thirtieth, 2022 per Administrator Nable.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I don't like to necessarily piecemeal individual fund budgets, but since we have some hurdles against, ahead of us as far as the general fund, and we're still working on compiling that, I didn't want to delay a couple of funds that are standalone funds with their own revenue sources. So what I have before you is the street and bridge fund, which is solely, the revenue is solely based of a tax levy that we adopted back in December of 2020, as well as grants from CDBG for sidewalk programs. Just making sure we get this approved now helps us go out to bid and get in the queue earlier, rather than wait to approve the bid, the budget later, which gets us better pricing on the projects and we can do a little more with them. Hotel motel tax fund, that's another standalone fund. Last year, we basically stopped the hotel motel tax grant program because of COVID and the pandemic. We knew that no events were going to be happening. So, and we didn't know what our hotel motel tax revenues were going to be because of hotels being closed. Typically, we get, in the past, we got about $120,000 to $140,000 a year of hotel motel tax. Last year, we got $36,000. So that fund was definitely hit by COVID. However, that being the case, I'm hoping that we're going to see things open up a little more. We have been approached by some recipients of this in the past, and they do plan on having events run this year in some capacity, based on what's allowed per governor's orders. So what I wanted to do is make sure we get that grant program back in place. And now that we know we got the $36,000 last year, we can budget a $34,000 grant program, which is consistent with prior years. So that if we approve this, they can plan on applying for this and start planning their events. We will make sure we will have caveats on the application, saying that it's to be done in compliance with orders in place at the time. But I wanted to get both of these done so that we didn't delay any further in their respective purposes.
Thank you, Administrator Nable. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve budgets for street and bridge fund and hotel motel tax fund for May one, 2021 through April thirtieth, 2022.
Is there a second? Comments or discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell. Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Holmes. Mayor McKinney.
Nine, we consider zoning docket twenty-one dash Z dash one in ordinance requesting a variance from section one oh two dash two oh six B two of the Zion Municipal Code to continue the use of property located at twenty-nine oh one Elisha Avenue as a multifamily residence in a R five single-family zoning district per Director Ianson. Planning and the zoning commission recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you, Your Honor. Almedo Brothers LLC is seeking a variance to section one oh two, two oh six B two of the Zion Municipal Code to continue the use of the property located at twenty-nine oh one Elisha Avenue as a multifamily residence in a R five single-family zoning district. At the January seventh, 2021 Planning Zoning Commission meeting, they recommended approval with conditions that they consolidate twenty-nine oh one and twenty-nine oh five Elisha to meet the minimum parking requirements.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Are there questions or comments?
A quick question for Director Ianson. How long has this property been a multi-unit building?
It was built way back in the mid-sixties.
Okay, so this has basically been an outlier within this zone for quite a while.
Also, Commissioner Fisher, it's also been abandoned for several years. And it's been a place where waters have camped out, drug deals. It's been a real security concern for the residents in that neighborhood, especially at the Carmel House. It's been great that somebody is finally taking property and going to put the money into it to restore. And as they've talked with Director Ianson about making sure that they secure the right tenants as they continue to move along.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner McDowell. Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Holmes. Mayor McKinney.
Item number nine F, consider approval of plat of consolidation for twenty-nine oh one and twenty-nine oh five Elisha Avenue per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Almedo Brothers LLC is requesting the council consider approving a plat of consolidation for twenty-nine oh one and twenty-nine oh five Elisha Avenue. Consolidation is necessary to meet the minimum parking requirements for the seven-unit apartment.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Comments or discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner McDowell. Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Holmes. Mayor McKinney.
Item number ten, departmental commentary. Director Ianson, you want to lead off?
Thank you, Your Honor. I was just going to make a comment on Mrs. Lear's concerns. We're very much aware of the wind blowing debris throughout the community, coming off of heavy snow and high winds we've had in recent weeks. And usually after winter, it takes a little time to get the neighborhoods cleaned up. We've been sending notices out notifying people that they need to clean up their properties. Public service has been out cleaning up the roadways and the alleyways, trying to keep up with it. So give it a little patience. We're working on it. We're going to try to get it addressed. And then as a cleanup day, I don't have the exact date, but I know it's coming up in August. We had limitations last year due to COVID, so we weren't able to go into the neighborhoods and clean up. We just did a drop-off day. Hopefully this year with the vaccinations, we can get out in the neighborhoods and clean up some of the properties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Ianson, that's August seventh, just for clarification.
And also
That'll be on the city website.
It'll be on the city website. And also, last year, we had, it was very successful because we spent time with recycling and electronics. we spent time with recycling and electronics, just because of COVID and everything, and it was a really successful day. And one of the reasons we went away from going through the neighborhoods and actually clean up was just the lack of participation from our residents. We send these notices out. We get fifty to sixty volunteers to come out. And one of the things, as I've said from the outset, we would like to get rid of cleanup day so that our residents would really clean up on their own. But also, when we have these cleanup days, get out and participate. So we we do a lot of marketing about that, trying to get people out. But the recycling and electronics has been a great way. And I think Commissioner McDowell said it too, spring is a time of resurrection. And one of the things that happens after the winter, all of the things that the snow covers, they come out. On April twenty second, we're going to be working with the park district on a, on Earth Day, and also with the county in cleaning up the Robert McChlorie bike path. So there's going to be notices going out to the park districts, park district from the park district to residents along that bike path where everybody uses. They walk their dogs. They ride their bikes. They walk, that they get out and kind of help clean up that that portion of the community. And then we'll continue that with our respective cleanup day on August seventh.
Director Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to announce that residents will start seeing a contractor for the city along twenty, between twenty first and twenty third, the alley west of Sheridan Road. We're replacing a nineteen twenty six, six inch water main, and also doing some drainage work within those alleys and some sanitary work. Construction is supposed to start April twelfth. However, this week, you'll start seeing the contractor moving some materials and equipment in in that zone. I also attended a letting for IDOT on Sheridan Road, and that was back in March. That project for reservicing Sheridan Road from Greenwood to Russell Road was approved. Next week, I should be getting informed on a start date on that project.
Thank you, Director Roberts. I had a call today about kind of spring cleanup with leaves and debris from yards. I directed the gentleman to our city website. Could you comment on that and the start time of?
Events disposal started April first with their bag lawn pickup. That runs all the way through November thirtieth. The leaf vacuuming will start the twenty sixth, twenty fourth to twenty sixth of April. That is posted on our website also. That will run for two weeks. So they will run their trash. The day your trash is picked up is the day they'll pick up the vacuuming on that also. You'll end up getting each resident, it will be buy for two pickups.
And the the other question that was was raised, and I've been asked about two, is for branches, people that are clipping branches, can you tell us the size that they need to be and how they need to be bundled before they can be picked up?
They can be bundled in two foot, you're going to go off my memory here. It's posted on our website, but I believe it's an eighteen inch round bundle tied together two foot long. No branches over four inches in diameter, I believe. They will pick that up with the lawn bag pickups.
Okay, so we'll we'll continue direct people to our website, and I know if they will go to, we'll we'll put that out on our respective city pages, as this is a time of change in the seasons, and we want to make sure everybody is aware of the protocols for the these kind of things.
They can also call the Bubble Works front desk. The secretaries there have that notice. They can explain exactly how that needs to be bundled.
Okay, thank you very much, Director Roberts.
Thank you.
Director Nabel?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items. One, the first is just a reminder that current city vehicle stickers expire at the end of this month. They are currently on sale. The forms, the forms went out, one, one with every water bill for the past three sections. So every resident should have a vehicle sticker form, but they are available on our website as well for download. Additionally, we are setting up appointments to get stickers in person for seniors, handicapped individuals, and military service, active military service to be able to try and do that person if if necessary. But you, there is the Dropbox right outside of City Hall for payment or regular mail. What we do then is we would mail the sticker back out once we receive the payment and the information. So those expire at the end of this month. Please make sure to get those renewed before, because of the sticker, the the ticket for not having that is a lot more than the the sticker. So and you'll still be required to get a sticker at that point. The second item I have relates to water shut offs. Individuals have been, we've been sending out with each each monthly bill, if if a individual is eligible for water shut off due to delinquency or lack of payment over the past year. We have not done shut offs or penalties, interest penalties for delinquency due to the pandemic. However, we will be doing that in the relatively near future. Initially, we were looking at May first. However, the the stay on evictions, I believe, goes into June twenty eighth or to late June. So right now, we're looking at July first as the, where we would start doing shut offs again. So individuals that are eligible have been getting shut off notices with a letter that says, we're not currently doing this, but your account is eligible. The township has all of those, that information of those individuals, and has been doing outreach, and they are willing to provide assistance and connect with resources so that people can get current on their utility bills before we get to that point. So you may see that in water bills, but don't freak out about it. Just try and make sure you get current before we re-implement those, those shut offs.
Also, along those lines, Administrator Nabel, we've received a lot of information from a lot of the stakeholders in the community, ComEd and North Shore Gas, where they are, you can call them if you're having trouble with your your payments of any kind, and they will help you with the payment program. We've tried to list some of those programs on our websites, but go to ComEd or North Shore Gas. And the other thing is, if you're having trouble with payment, rent assistance, anything, call two one one. That's a United Way number that will direct you to the resources that you need to help you during this time of need for for all of our residents.
Chief Barton?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Commissioners. I guess I'll start with, I think we maybe should start comparing notes is what we're going to talk about with department commentary, since Administrator Nabel took my city sticker comment. But sorry about that. Those are available. The ticket, as you mentioned, is seventy five dollars. The the city sticker is fifty dollars. So please make sure you just buy the city sticker and not also a ticket with it. One of the things I want to discuss as well was two to six parking. As the summer hours, the evening hours get longer, parties go longer. Please remember that there is no parking on city streets from two AM to six AM. Citations are being issued for those. We've instructed our people to go ahead and start issuing citations for both those and and city stickers as needed. To comment on Ms. Lear's citizen comment earlier in Article one, or Chapter six, Article one, Section six dash ten refers to biting and attacking dogs or other animals. It is our, it is a city ordinance to address those vicious animals that she as she spoke about. I I'm not sure if she was referring to something else, but as if we do have an animal that is violent or vicious, does it attack, we do cite those people, we do quarantine or take that animal. And then after two bites, within a twenty four month period, that animal is removed from the city and not allowed to return. So if Ms. Lear, if you're still listening, if you'd like to reach out, you you have my office line. Please, please contact me, and we can talk further about that.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Street?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. Piggybacking off of cleanup and yard waste cleanup, just a brief reminder that yard waste burning is against city ordinance. I know the temptation is to start a quick fire to take care of some leaves or some twigs, but that is, that is against city ordinance for quite a few reasons, safety and health at at the top of those reasons. Campfires, of course, are great. Even I love a good campfire at the evening, but it's got to be within the size limits. And the city website or code award, it says, has has all that spelled out as well. So residents, please check that out. And the other thing is just, please mark your calendars from Sunday, May second. I've mentioned this a couple of times, but we'll be hosting a community blood drive in conjunction with Red Cross that day. So please come out and join us.
All right, thank you, Chief Street. Do any of the Commissioners have any comments? Going one, going two. Before we finish up and go to announce, I do want to down, talk about the dumping issue that Ms. Lear was talking about as well. Within the past week or two, I've spent time working with ComEd, the Park District, and the county in dealing with some of these dump dumping issues in different parts of our city. One of the things that we're trying to do with our new ComEd rep is we talk to them a lot about trying to get cameras in areas. There's been some dumping down at Hosa Park and ComEd and Exlon, even though they're splitting, they've been working with us to make sure that they patrol that area at least six times a day down by Hosa Park, because there's a large number of tires dumped there. So we're getting a lot of cooperation between the different entities to make sure that this issue is addressed throughout our community. When you talk about the area in which you live, right across from Cheryl's, I go by there, drive by there quite a bit. One of the things that I I'm sure that I'll do, now that you mentioned this, is is talk to Cheryl's about getting a ring camera put up in their business. And once those things are put up in different areas, they catch the culprits that are dumping, and then we can do something about it. So if you see somebody dumping items where they shouldn't be, don't reach out, don't hesitate to reach out to call anyone within the city, myself, our our building department, because we want to make sure that's cut down. We we've got a tremendous amount of cooperation right now as I've been in conversations with ComEd Exlon and the Park District about cleanups. And this is probably the worst time of year, as I mentioned earlier, for for what the city looks like. I've always thought, after winter comes and spring arrives, the city probably looks as bad as it looks. And it's not just our city, it's probably every city. So we have to start doing those little things that that we've talked about in policing our neighborhood. Get some people from your block and and pick up, pick up the trash that's there. I I know the, I've seen some of the advanced disposal drivers on some of the windy days in different neighborhoods that they're getting out of their trucks and picking up some of the debris that's being, being windblown. So they're making the effort, and we have to continue to make the effort as a community to do those things. Item number eleven is announcements on April thirteenth. There's a six PM annual town meeting. And on April twentieth, there's a Zion Township meeting at six o'clock, and Zion City Hall meeting at seven PM. And also, on April twenty second, there'll be information coming out from the Park District about Earth Day and cleanup along the Robert McChlorie Bike Trail right along Galilee. So we'll be enlisting people in that area to to get out and help clean up their neighborhood and make the bike path look nice and safe. We've also talked with ComEd about the prospect of lighting the bike path so that we don't have the safety issues. A couple of years ago, I talked with the county and the Park District about putting garbage cans up so that people will be more inclined to dump their litter into the garbage cans instead of on the bike path. So we're getting that kind of cooperation, and we're really kind of drilling down to the details of how we can continue to make our city look beautiful. Item number twelve, closed session pursuant to five ILCS one twenty slash two Open Meetings Act for the discussion of filed pending and or probable or imminent litigation, collective bargaining, and personnel. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make that motion.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Just to everyone who's here from the public, there will not be any action items other than adjournment after closed, but you're welcome to stick around.
All right, item number thirteen. I'm I'm sure everybody will be disappointed with item number thirteen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
I'll move.
Second.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Everybody drive home safely.
Thank you.